Okay, it's five o'clock. Call the meeting to order. We have a quorum and no one has asked to speak in our public forums, so can I get approval of the agenda? So.
Second.
Oh gosh, this is.
Pete. Roger. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we are to discussion items and superintendent before.
Okay, we just have our special, or student council, so Violet's here to talk about student council. So you want to share this?
Um, right now, we have a winter wonderland going on at the elementary school. J S L S is putting that on and doing like fun kids crafts for the elementary students.
Right now as we speak, they're all in there, right?
Yep. Um, trying to think of what else.
Selling hot cocoa.
Oh yeah, we're selling hot cocoa out in the concessions for a dollar. And there's a dollar for toppings, so two dollars in total.
What do we got last Friday?
Oh, we had a pep rally last Friday in the auditorium and we did a family feud with two teams. It was really fun. And in January or February, we're gonna put on a daddy-daughter dance in the lunchroom for the community, for everybody in our community.
All right, you have lots of stuff going on.
Very busy, very nice.
Thank you. Thanks for sharing.
Thank you.
You can say if you would like, but you don't have to.
Okay.
Thanks, Violet.
Doesn't get very exciting.
Yeah.
Thank you. Facility committee update, I think we.
We haven't met, we don't, yeah, we just, the middle school has been our project, but, and then we just went on the tour, but.
Yeah. Student accolades.
Okay. Bill is, um, at the middle school games. Jeff might be over with the activity going on right now, so Casey, we'll, we will, we'll talk through Bill and Jeff's real quick here. So the elementary kids did a Macy's Day parade at Thanksgiving with robots and different balloons, and it was really kind of cool, so that was, that's one of them. Kindergarten classes, they're doing a project. Mrs. Shwiri's, this, it's code week, and so STEM has been a big focus in the last couple of weeks. Last couple of weeks. Viddybots, which are little mini robots, and then the little kindergartners and first graders learn how to program, so it's the first starting of programming. And then Mr. Mosher downloaded an interactive game with clear touchboards in the PE. Mr. Mosher, the PE teacher, so they were, they did that, which is very different than what they usually do in the gym. Middle school, they made crepes and they, they did practice flipping them, which I think was a funny thing, had a good time. Uh, let me make that a little bit bigger. Mock trial, they did really well. I think they placed fifth at the middle school, so.
Seventh.
Seventh, okay. Um, and then one of their digital media projects is to do a teacher walk-up song, kind of like you would have a walk-up or baseball or other things.
If you haven't seen that video, you should go try to find it on the social media pages.
It is linked.
Okay, watch it. It's, no, it's long.
It is.
But you, you know, but it is fantastic and funny. How many kids it took to put that on and teachers and then to edit it, and did a really good job with that.
And that's middle school kids, so they did, they did do a good job. Mrs. Weidemeyer, the art teacher, did a great job with them. And then math stations and a popcorn science experiment, so they have a lot, they're having lots of fun in the middle school. All right, Case.
Okay, uh, the first, our capturing kids' heart coach, Jimmy Dawson, uh, came on in November sometime, I don't remember the date, and went and did observations with teachers, and then we would go into classrooms and observe together. So he's in that blue shirt on the left. And this is just a picture I took, we were in Carmen Nelson's classroom, observing her class. And then we met later and talked. And then there's a couple of pictures from the Christmas concert last Thursday, was it last Thursday? The kids singing, and then at the end they did the hallelujah chorus and invited all the audience up, and there were quite a few who joined, I think some even in this room were up there singing, and that was pretty cool. Got me in the Christmas spirit for sure. Uh, our state dance competition was last week, I believe. Our world language club, and now it's world language, we don't do foreign language anymore, so that's a new thing I'm trying to remember. Had a cuisine night, it smelled very good. And then we had STEM students, you saw the trees out, out there, they had to all, it was like a found upcycle, so they had to find everything, they couldn't pay for anything. It was all discarded or trash, and they had to make something out of it, so.
That makes it look much cooler.
Yeah.
Yes, yeah, yeah, yeah.
So, yeah, so that was fun.
At the district, uh, we had our first girls' home wrestling meet, which was really pretty cool, and we've got lots of girls wrestlers out, so it's, it's fun to see that happening and just to kind of be part of that history. The construction updates, we keep sharing those on the social media sites, so the public can kind of see where we're at with things. Computer science family night was at the elementary. Health and wellness committee is, and Jade is part of that, and as well as Anne Hightoff runs that, but we've got a wellness committee and they try to post wellness ideas, and then that's why when Dr. Gentile came in, um, as part of their group. And then we had three teachers who were honored by the Perrion Lodge. They do something in the spring and in the fall for, and they give each teacher a $200 check. We actually had four, Jared Boyson is missing on that one. So it's kind of nice, they have a little supper for everyone and a little ceremony, and just $200, they can do whatever they want, whether they want to use it in their classroom or use it for Christmas presents, so it's very nice. And they get that through can recycling. All of the cans that they recycle. They also give several scholarships to our kids too, as well.
Good for them.
Great.
All right, personnel report.
Our new nurse started today, so her name is Emily Rainey. We are going to approve our early resignation, or early retirement notifications tonight. Um, we've got Nyra Sondag, Linda Peterson, Mark Corcorce, and Laura Petche. Four of them, we have five spots available, and we are only using four, so, um, those, people give early retirement notification. Um, Ashley, our administrative assistant in the district office, resigned to go to IKM to be their SBO. She's gonna stay on one day a week and help us with payroll still through the end of the year, and you'll see that cooperation agreement with IKM later on in the meeting. And then, so we're still, uh, looking for a softball coach, and then we added volleyball coach. You'll see Ellie Kreese resigning to her position. And then we have, uh, Mark Corcorce, assistant football coach, and assistant basketball. And then we have, um, at the bottom there, two, uh, we're gonna hire two summer tech helpers in, um, tech services, and those, uh, pre-qualification for that position is that they have taken, um, the class, um.
Fix the, the.
Oh, like the. Yeah, student.
They've cert, they've got the certification from work.
So they, they've been working with Jeremy and Jim and Brett in, in the tech department already. So there's quite a, maybe five of them that are eligible for it, and we're gonna hire two. And, um, what's really cool about it is we're gonna put them all through the interview process. They're gonna have to sit down and interview with us and submit their application online, um, just to kind of help them learn more about applying for a job. Um, so once we approve these, then we'll put the certified vacancies on for next month. Any questions?
So these are all anticipated?
Yeah, vacancies.
Language arts. Yeah.
Can I get a motion to approve the personnel report?
So. Al, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Uh, next up is approval for early graduation.
So we had one student who initially had her name on the early graduation list, and then decided she was gonna stay and do some extra college classes, and then is, but is going into the Air Force and now is able to graduate early. So Paige Wilberding requested with Casey again to add her name, and she does have all of her graduation requirements.
She had a date to leave for basic and it was earlier, and then after the election, that date got pushed back, so then she was gonna stay and then has decided that she's, she's now going to move and work on the base instead until her basic date pops up, so.
So her name just wasn't on our list that we approved, so we just need to approve it?
I'll make a motion to approve her as an early graduate.
I'll say it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, and next up is approval of request for allowable growth for modified supplemental amount for dropout and dropout prevention in the amount of 527,300.
This is something we do annually, it's to cover our at-risk cost. We, uh, basically are applying to get the authority, then if you need, obviously if you have to backfill with cash, you can, but this is for the authority. We've done it every year I've been here. And if you don't apply for the full amount, you lose it after going forward.
Permanently.
Permanently.
It's 5% of your entire.
Isn't there a district that only was approving like 3%, and they can't get back up to 5?
There's, there's.
And that's why it's on the legislative table. Because they're at 3% and they can't get to 5.
That's right, they're at 3% and they can't get back up to 5.
And I think, oh, would mine too. I think part of it was because they didn't have as big of an analysis calculation at the time.
Any other questions? Any motion to approve?
So moved. Call circuit.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, next is the, next up is the approval for, or approval of the PE waiver.
Okay, this was just, I mean, I put the explanation in your board, but it's, it, we have to do it as a board annually in order to, for it to be an option for our students to get a PE waiver throughout the year. So it's not something that we hand out all the time very easily, but sometimes kids just need that PE waiver based on their schedule of classes.
I'll make the motion to approve the PE waiver.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, next up is approval of sharing agreement for payroll administrator for fiscal year 2024.
So this is what Catherine was talking about with Ashley. Ashley's taking, getting, taking a promotion, basically, or getting a promotion and applying for it. She's gonna be the Brian of IKM, so we're happy to see her get a promotion. We're kind of sad seeing her leave, so the payroll piece of it, we've, she has agreed to help us with at least until July. So, um, the posting that we have up right now is for an administrative assistant minus the payroll, depending on who we find that could fulfill that position. If they can do payroll, then we will add that back in to that job description after July. But right now, this is just to get us through in the transition.
Is there a reason we don't just post for that and hire for the full role?
Well, yes, because we were afraid we wouldn't find someone.
Just transitionally would be really tough.
The payroll isn't tough.
It takes some training. Payroll for the school, for somebody to step in immediately and assume that, there, that would be really tough, and to be honest with you, I've been here 15 or 16 or 17 years, and I've had to do it once in an emergency, and it's tough.
But I had the same question. It didn't make sense to me to post for something that Ashley can't feasibly be an efficient SBO IKM and do our payroll every year for several years, in my opinion. So I did ask about that, if we were potentially alienating somebody by the salary and by not including that, if they're like, well, if that's not included, I wouldn't apply, then. So I did ask about that as well.
Yeah, that, I mean, that makes sense, and if we do, if we do have someone that can take over payroll and she can help with the transition, then we can negotiate that salary for sure.
Payroll weekly.
Payroll is monthly.
Monthly.
The other thing, Pete, that we can do with Ashley is we're sharing, we get sharing dollars with her. So we are right now sharing Brian, but we won't need to share Brian, so we're really kind of sharing Ashley, so it, it, that's another reason we decided to do that.
My fear is we put ourselves in a corner we can't get out of.
Well, we can act, we can put that.
We have, um, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but we have already gotten some, I think, quite a few applications with payroll experience, so we are, I, I think, I, I mean, I've only looked at one or two of them, because I've gotten through four today, but, um, so.
So is this, can this be changed anytime? Is it just one payroll for December, or is this continuing into 2025?
Through the rest of this contract.
So what if, can we change the date if, if we get somebody that can do the payroll earlier, or?
We think that either through that, yeah.
We would almost be better to keep it as it is.
And then both do payroll like one.
I see. I don't disagree with that at all, I just want to make sure we hire for the skill.
Yeah, I agree with you, I think we gotta hire for. Because what happens if, just, my question is if we don't get someone that has a payroll or isn't able to do the payroll, so then is the thought, then you would have her, Ashley, continue to try to do the sharing next year? Or are you just assuming?
That would be a reasonable thought, because there would be sharing dollars available.
Are you assuming that whoever we hire is gonna be able to learn the payroll?
Well, I would, I, that was my assumption.
Is that you would hire somebody that's gonna be able to take it?
If they didn't have payroll, but I also understand Pete's point, that if we don't put payroll experience on there, we can certainly. We can definitely add that to the.
I just wonder if it excludes somebody who actually has payroll experience and thinks that that's not what's being looked for.
Yeah.
And the salary is a little bit of a deterrent if you are qualified and are going to take less of a job while somebody else shares it. I understand the sharing piece, but I have the same question about that.
I think what we would do is if, if we did hire someone with payroll experience, then we would continue to share just for the sharing agreement for both districts, because it's a benefit for both of them, um, and then the transition would be even better, because you'd have someone that would just.
They'd work together.
So, yeah.
Well, had she been an SBO before, maybe, but to me, I don't under, I do understand, but I think it's a little much to assume she'll be able to fully understand a new role for herself and for us to continue using it in years to come.
No, that's not what I said.
But you also have to understand that I'm actually sharing them there till June.
But we just clarified that today.
Oh, yeah.
That was just clarified today, till July.
She's, she's not flying on her own up there.
No, he's still sharing too, so there's.
So, understanding that the posting is out of order for this topic, something I would like to continue to talk about, but I'd move that we approve the sharing agreement through the initial.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Policy review schedule, first reading. Do I have any questions, concerns on this? This was, uh, not a whole lot of change in this one this week. You don't have any, any concerns? Can I get a motion to approve the first reading?
I'll make a motion to approve the first reading.
All second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I'm staying.
Okay.
Okay, hold on, you're staying from approving?
Oh, from the vote, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Are we good to go?
Yeah, yeah, thank you, sorry.
Um, then we have, next up is policy review schedule, the second reading.
I have a couple of questions here.
Okay.
The fourth item on the left, the disposition of complaint form. Does anyone can explain to me the purpose of that form? It appears to me to be nearly a duplicate of the complaint form itself, and I, I don't understand the disposition part of it.
Can I see it? Rather than looking into it?
Um.
It's basically the same as the.
Is this the disposition? Go ahead, what do you?
No, no, I, I, does it describe it in the movie form? Is this all of them?
No.
Oh, gosh, okay.
So what's the difference between the complaint form and the disposition?
My assumption reading the title was that it would be, it was turned in the state to this person, assigned to this investigator, but it looks to be almost a copy of the actual.
Yeah, it is basically the same thing.
Other than the title.
Right.
But one of them is the complaint pile, like the complaint, and one of them is who's acting upon it.
So this is.
The disposition, the disposition is the person who, how they're responding to it.
That's what I assumed, I don't see that on this form though.
I, okay, so, one second. Here's the difference right here, at the bottom, the summary of investiga, so this is the investigator who's writing the disposition of what happened, and then this is the person, if I am filing the complaint, this is what I file, but I'm not understanding your question. Am I?
He said they look very similar.
They do, they are.
Except for the word in the bottom.
The disposition form is to be used by the investigator.
And the other one is the.
In a, almost as an interview then, or as a recording of findings?
So there's an investigative, yes, a recording of findings.
Okay.
So the investigator does the investigation and looks, that's why it is similar, I think, to make sure that it matches the complaint?
Okay.
If that makes sense?
Yeah, that's very right.
And maybe we can even put on the top of it something like.
What she just said.
To be filled out by the interviewer.
I mean, yeah. This is, yeah.
More clarity.
Yep.
Sure.
If we do that, does it need to go back to first reading?
Yep. Just this one, okay, do you, just this one form, can we take this back, or do you want the whole, the two?
Well, let me, let me ask the next two questions. 104 R1 anti-bullying harassment investigation procedures. Page one of that, there's a couple, just, if I have a couple of typos in there. Okay. And then my question.
Do you have them circled?
I do.
Can I have that when you're done?
Uh, question was on page two, it looks like we're removing a clause there around if the complaint is under 18 years of age, that the guardian would be informed. Is there a reason we're choosing to remove that?
So, um, this is exactly what the IASB tells, says that we should do. We don't necessarily have to do that.
Understood, is there a reason they're suggesting we remove it?
They don't give me reasons, they just say this is what, this is how we have revised the policy.
Certainly asked, they would be happy to give us it.
Yeah, yes.
And is there a law somewhere that says school boards are required to, what are we required to do, to ratify or to read or to approve? Exactly what does the Department of Education say about these policies? And I suspect it comes from the state legislature, to the Department of Education, to the Iowa School Board Association, to us, but I've never understood exactly what's, what is the law saying particularly?
Bottom line is.
Go ahead.
No, no, you go ahead. I was just saying, the bottom line is that we, we set the policy and, but we are, what they, our requirement is that we have to follow our policy. If there are some areas where the legal people at IASB looked and they say, it'd be better to word it that way because of various scenarios, they, they give us those recommendations.
So what, what happens, Al, if we say to the Department of Education, we don't want to use these policies?
Well, we don't have to use the IASB policies though, we should have all of our relatives, our district.
Yeah, you, it just, but if it's a law, if it's, if it's a law, then we need to.
Then there are, and we.
Some of them are based in law.
So a couple of things, one, from a parental involvement, I have a problem taking that out. Two, it seems to me, I see the school pushing toward a desire for deeper family engagement, and this would move away from that. So personally, I would have a hard time advancing this one until we get clarity on that.
I, I think one of the things on that last, um, the complaint, the complaint and identity of the complainant, respondent, or witnesses will only be disclosed as a reasonably necessary in connection with the investigation required by law. I don't understand why they struck that either, because, I mean, that, you, you need to protect the child. You're not gonna tell the parent every single thing, but also, I'm not sure. So we can definitely look into that.
So this one and.
And then the.
Molding off on all of them.
I think the.
Well, we could, yeah.
The form was, we want to add some clarity to the, the purpose of that.
The form was the 10.
The.
Disposition.
Disposition of complaint.
104-E3.
104-E3.
Sometimes.
Disposition of complaint form.
Sometimes the answer you will get from them is that the reason this is struck here is because it's addressed in a different policy.
Or further down.
Get the answer.
Well, we'll just, well, yeah, we'll.
Sometimes I find myself taking it out of the top and putting it in the bottom, too, so.
I admit, I'm not at all.
Yeah, but I think, I think Pete's right.
Well, that's a standing argument, it's good.
I love that you're reading them and asking questions, that's awesome.
Okay, so the question is, do we want to take just, do we want to bring these two pieces back?
Yes.
Not all of the whole thing, right? Just the two?
Well, does it mess with the initial one though, the investigation procedures, if we're messing with one of the forms?
Well, I think you just must know why they're so similar and why it doesn't say.
But you want reworded?
Well, we can put this is to be filled out by the.
Well, I was just asking.
That we're gonna read, if we're going to reword it, we don't want to pass our second reading. We wanna take it back to first reading.
This one, the disposition form, right?
Disposition form, as well as we want clarification on the under 18.
But not the, not the form that is exactly like the disposition form. The complete form, right.
No, I don't, excuse me.
So I got the two, we're gonna take them back.
Clarification on one, and.
Clarification and back to first reading.
Yeah, more understanding, Al.
Is it listed though in the initial investigation procedures that, is that 18-year-old clause taken out too in that?
I would read the, the green.
You have the, something, yeah, but.
I'm looking at it now.
Look at it this month, so I do not.
Your newness hasn't worn off yet, they like the US, it's not new. My newness has worn off.
She's a question you want.
Evidently, you're a mess. I don't think that the 18-year-old one is in there, I think, because the process is a little more global, if that makes more sense, and then you dig down to fill out this form, this is the. I don't see that, the only similar language I see is at the very bottom that struck like an employee volunteer, student guardian who promptly and reasonably in good faith reports an incident, just what you had mentioned at the end of that other one.
It'd be good to talk to Siobhan about it, and see what she says. By the way, thank you, Al, you had a good explanation.
Well, I don't know. But, bottom line is, we, we set policy, but we, we have to fit it within state law. Other than that, we just.
Whether it connection.
As I think about it, boy, well, since I have an underage child.
Yeah, you want to be involved, for sure. Good job.
Yeah, I wanted to be on policy.
Good questions. Looks like that.
We take it to them and they say, wow, that's good.
The disposition, um, 104-E3, and then can you tell me what the regulations?
This is. You?
Got you.
There's a motion made somewhere.
So, we are going to.
Oh, 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 sorry, sorry, sorry. There you go.
So we are not going to approve, uh.
This is.
Just the disposition form, and we are not going to approve, um, exhibit 104.
R1.
Would that be accurate?
R1, yeah, I said the board recommends the approval of the policies as presented with the exception of 104. with the exception of 104-E3 and Policy 104-R1, and I will confirm that, um, which, which we will get further clarification on then. It's one of them. She has highlighted there.
There we go. Here's our one.
Do we need to put in a motion that it goes back to first reading, then next to his ass?
I will do that, yep.
Wait a second.
Oh, well, no, it is right. It's right.
It's right.
Mine, it doesn't show it's struck through.
You are correct.
Mine, it doesn't show it's struck through.
It doesn't? Very unsimply? Well, I don't know how else you would see it not unsimply now, right?
Oh, I, I guess I didn't, yes, I couldn't tell it was struck through. That's what I was like.
Okay, so can I get a motion to approve the second reading on all of the, all except those two?
Pete?
Except 104-E3 and 104-R1.
Yep.
Second.
Pete, no? Okay, thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? An election. Okay. Um, we move on to consent agenda.
I didn't have any questions on the financial reports.
Anyone have any questions or concerns with the consent agenda? Can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Al, second?
Al, June?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we are now, I wonder how this is going to go. We are now to adjournment.
So moved.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, you just have to be there.